Twenty-two, at this time, I will call for nomination of chairperson pro temp.
I will nominate Heidi Murphy.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, good evening. It is April fourth, twenty twenty-two.
I'm going to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. We have any members of the public that joined our meeting this evening? Please find your mute button if you would like to speak. Pause for just a moment. All right, then we'll move on to item five, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Any corrections, edits, or a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the minutes for our March twenty-second meeting as of this.
All right, thank you, Paul. Have a second. Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to presentations to the board. Tonight, we have a presentation by Dane County's Joining Forces for Families Initiative. We have a guest here to talk about the joining forces for families.
Janelle, right?
Janelle.
Janelle, thank you.
Sure, that'd be great.
Do we need the PowerPoint on the, on the screen?
She's never done a PowerPoint in her entire life.
I don't usually, we just came up with a new PowerPoint, so I've never used the PowerPoint, but if you have it up, I didn't bring it, so.
Let's see.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I am not that technologically savvy myself.
Me either. It's all about the content, right? So that's why we're.
I'll just, I found out about joining forces for family through Dane County, and so I reached out to Janelle, who's in our community, and that's how she came to be here this evening. And I forgot that you were coming, so I saw you there, and I was like, I'm so sorry, I didn't introduce myself early. It's just, it's weird being back in person to meetings and seeing people at our meetings in person, so thank you for being here.
Yeah, well, thanks. Well, thank you for inviting me, yeah, to come and share about our program through Dane County. I'll try and look at my notes a little bit, and, but yeah, so you can go on to the next slide. So just to tell you a little bit about who we are, we are part of Dane County Department of Human Services. We're under our Prevention and Early Intervention Division. About three years ago or so, the county kind of split, so we have the Youth and Families, Children Youth and Families area, which is Child Protective Services, Youth Justice, those programs. And then we have all our early Prevention, Early Intervention Services, so we fall under that. We started back in nineteen ninety-three with two offices that covered the whole kind of county area. And currently, we have one manager, one supervisor, one program coordinator. There's fifteen of us that are spread out throughout the county, and we have one housing specialist that came on just after COVID started. Go on to the next one. We're a community-based program, and so our offices, like I said, are based all throughout the county. And most of our offices are in sites like apartment buildings, neighborhoods, schools, work and community centers. My office is in Sun Prairie. I'm based out of Sunshine Place. I don't know if you've heard of that. It houses the food pantry in the area there, and as well as some other programs. So my office is there. I currently cover Sun Prairie, Marshall, and Cottage Grove are my three communities. I took on Marshall when COVID came because we lost a worker, and there was a hiring freeze that the county put in place. And so we just got approval to hire a new position, so we will be hiring, I think it's posted already. And then I'll share a bit about that position as it, as I move through. We don't have our offices open to the public yet. The county's talking about maybe June. I'm hoping our JFF offices can be open before then. I've been pushing for that because I've been working out of my office in Sun Prairie since June of two thousand twenty, twenty twenty, so it's just nice to be out in the community, and because of the work that we do, just really connecting with people in the community, it's kind of nice to be there. I've had people stop by the office, and so we can do appointments right now, but don't have our doors open for just walk-in traffic. I'm hoping that that changes soon, and just given the work we do. We're, a lot of the work that we do is informed by neighborhood voices. See, we do our best to pay attention to the needs of the community and to provide the support that's needed within the community. I don't get a lot of referrals from Cottage Grove. Most of the referrals I do get come through the schools. A lot of the work that we do is powered by our local partnerships, so we work closely, like I said, with schools, churches in the community, volunteer groups, and most of our communities, we started out with these teams of people that would meet, people who were doing, providing services within the community, and some of those have kind of fallen by the wayside over the years as some of the school people get busy within the buildings and they have a hard time getting out to meetings outside of their buildings. So a lot of our teams aren't meeting as regularly as we used to. When I started covering Cottage Grove, and I was going to go back and look to see when I took on Cottage Grove, it's been a few years now, but I had a team that was meeting. We would meet at one of the schools here in town. And then we started meeting monthly, and then after a while, everybody thought that was a little too much, so then we went to every other month. And then often I would show up and be the only one there, so, so we kind of stopped just for, the team got together, and we decided, let's not meet regularly, but they reach out as they need and have needs with families in the community, so. So that has worked so far. As you'll see, and that picture's going to be a little hard to tell, but we have fifteen of us, and we have eighteen offices. So some have two offices. I just have the one in Sun Prairie, even though I cover the three communities. And then our, yeah, so as I was saying earlier, we have this new position that will be taking, coming on soon, hopefully, if the position's been posted. The decision's been made that that position will cover the Manona Grove School District. We have another coworker who's going to be retiring this year sometime, and he covers Manona. And I've had Cottage Grove, which is a little weird because it's the same school district, and a lot of our offices are school district-based. So I cover all of Sun Prairie School District, even though it's, so some of the boundary is outside of Sun Prairie. I cover all of Marshall, which also includes some other little communities around Marshall. So with Cottage Grove and Manona, because it's one school district, but two different communities that aren't really connected, it's been a little bit of a, of a weird, yeah, like where does the family live, you know, we always have to ask, so. So it'll be nice. So our new worker will be covering the whole Manona Grove School District, and will then have more time to actually get embedded into the community and hopefully really begin to assess what are the needs that the community has, what, what do families need, what do individuals need, so that.
Can they always make some butter toasted bread? Sure.
So that position will be, again, covering the, the school district. It's a bilingual hire, Spanish, which will be nice. So they're also going to provide some Spanish support, speaking support to the Sun Prairie and Marshall area because we have a growing Latino community there as well, so, and then surrounding around here. So that will be a great addition to our offices. Some of our offices are large and have multiple partners in them, and some of our offices are small. So each one is different, and again, we cater to what the needs of the community are. So if you guys see needs in your community, then certainly reach out and let me know. And once the new person's hired, I'll be bringing them around as well to get them introduced within the community to the people I've worked with. Most of, like I said, most of who I've worked with here has been schools because they're connecting with a lot of those families. We currently have six bilingual Spanish-speaking workers, which is great when we look at language access for families. A lot of different partner agencies that we work with don't have quite the language access that we do. So we've really worked to have that within our workers, and then we have one Monge-speaking worker. So he's helping to provide that Monge-speaking support throughout the whole county. But all of our offices, of course, use Language Line as we need because we've had a lot more different languages coming in. I've seen some community members from Africa. We're getting some of the refugees coming into the area, so we'll use Language Line whenever we need. So what do we do? So a lot of it is basic needs. So we have families that will reach out to us, individuals in the community with needs. A lot of it lately, as you can imagine, has been housing. So we get calls for rent assistance, for help in finding housing, and that has been a little rough lately with COVID. The housing market has been, the rental rate, I think, is the lowest it's ever been in our area. So that has been hard for people. I've talked to many, many families living in hotels, and doubled up with other families just until they can get into a place. Lot of apartment complexes. I know there's a lot of apartments going up, but a lot of those that tend to be a little bit more affordable for families on that lower income scale have wait lists already. I talked to a landlord just at the end of last week. They have a wait list out till about June, and some are, don't have any openings till August. So that's been, housing's been one of our biggest. But we work directly with families, listening to what they need, and then helping them connect to those resources within the community. And if there's not anything local, then we'll reach out. One of the nice things with Sunshine Place, where my office is, is when COVID hit, they started looking for grants. And I know they got a few different grants to help with kind of rent assistance, utility assistance. And because of when they were applying for the grant and wanting to be able to reach more families than just Sun Prairie, they opened it up to all the surrounding communities. So I've been helping a lot of families in Cottage Grove, in Marshall, into Forest with rent and utility assistance through their fund, which has been wonderful. Yeah, so a lot of my last ending slides are kind of on housing stuff, which I realized I should, probably should have taken out. But yeah, a lot of what we do is information and referral with families, again, depending on what they need, connection to basic resources, helping them fill out apartment applications, helping them fill out applications for badger care, food share, and then just, again, assessing what's the needs of the community are and connecting to community partners. Any questions for me?
Would you say where the office will be located in Manona Grove School District?
So that's a little bit up in the air right now. We have a, one of my colleagues that is on the east side of Madison covers that border or right along Cottage Grove Road. So they're thinking about maybe housing those two workers together in one office and having it be kind of on the edge, kind of between Madison and Cottage Grove here. I know the other worker is in an office pretty much by herself, and so we're trying to look at how we can combine some of our offices that, so that we're not out there. My office in Sun Prairie, I have a public health nurse through Public Health Madison Dane County, and she's out in Sun Prairie on a partnership that was created by JFF and Public Health. And she does community work, not direct nursing with families, but she does more community developing work. And then I have someone in my office who's a partnership, again, with Centro Hispano and JFF, and he does provide Spanish-speaking. So basically what I'm doing, but to the Latino community. But yeah, so that would be nice because it would be almost a good in-between between Manona and Cottage Grove.
I was wondering, do you work with other communities and agencies, not just Dane County programs? Like, do you know basically everything that's happening at the municipal levels and county levels for programs?
Yeah, so, I mean, we work, I work quite a bit with several of the different programs. We have to know, you know, all the stuff with homelessness, so work closely with the whole Service Consortium, Housing Navigation Services that the county funded to help with some of the housing search. Yeah, and then other organizations like the Early Childhood Initiative, Reach Dane, anybody who's doing work in the community, we try and know about.
And a lot of them probably reach out to you, too, like, you know, they, they know you're there, and.
Yeah, a lot of the work is, is collaboration. We need our partners.
Right.
And, I mean, that's the one thing that joining forces for families has, has done. I mean, it's in the name, it's joining forces, so we are always looking for partners, even local. Like, if there's local Lions Club or Optimist Club that want to do work in the community, I mean, those are the people we want to connect with. I know some programs in some of our communities were created by local groups that wanted to do something. There's a job club that was started on the west side of Madison because a church group wanted to help people with resumes and finding jobs. And so they started this whole job club, just helping people look for work and fill out resumes and do practice interviewing. And it's, they got grants now, and it's blown up into a good support. So, yeah, any group that's wanting to do, sees a need in the community and wants to do something, let me know. Always looking for those partners.
Great, thank you.
A lot of great work here. Appreciate you sharing, impactful work in our community. Really appreciate that.
And I'm really hoping, again, I mean, with some of us, because, you know, and I know my coworker who covers Manona, covers four communities, and that's a lot to really get embedded in the community. I mean, I've worked in Sun Prairie since nineteen ninety-nine, so I know Sun Prairie the most. So it's taken a little bit to just find out what's happening in Marshall and in Cottage Grove, and who those partners are that we can connect with, so. So thank you again for inviting me to come and share, because if, yeah, if you are aware of things, I mean, certainly reach out. I think we really appreciate your presentation and awareness about all the good work you're doing. I did have a question about how people are referred to you. Is it generally through school workers? Just wondering if maybe there's a portion of that population, kids that aren't in school yet, that maybe we can help connect with services that you may provide. Yeah, so a lot of referrals are coming either through school or through some of our other partners. So if someone from Reach Dane's working with the early childhood family who's connected to one of their early childhood programs, then they would often refer a lot of families, call 211. So the United Way First Call for Help 211, and then they have all our information, and we'll refer families that way. Sometimes if someone's looking for rent assistance, they might call, like, Community Action Coalition, or they might call Tenant Resource Center, and if it's not something that they will do directly, then they're often referring. Because I know Tenant Resource Center doesn't really do one-on-one housing search, so then they'll refer. So we get referrals from all different sources. And sometimes, I mean, I've had calls lately even from clinics, so some of the clinics, if they have someone who comes in and, and talking, if they have a need, then they'll refer. And you would say housing is the largest share currently? I would say, in the last several years, housing's our, our number one call. And either, and especially with COVID, because so many people lost work or had, you know, whether they lost their job or had reduced hours, so many were looking for rent support and utility support. And then, yeah, just finding housing. It's a job to find housing. It really is. And you think, I mean, I think if you were just somebody, like, if I was looking for a rental now, it's going to be difficult. And then you have any other barrier. So some landlords are turning tenants away just because they have poor credit. They can have a stellar rental history, have always paid their rent on time, but, you know, maybe have hospital bills or other things that has caused their credit to not be that great, and they'll get turned down because there's probably, you know, thirty other applicants that they have to sort through. I think it's, yeah, very important work, and appreciate you helping the families in our community, and we hope to gain more support among our organizations to, to help join forces. Any other questions from the board? Or any board members virtually? Great, well, with that, I really appreciate your time and your work.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, can move on to, if I don't have any objections, and if Jill from the Ride has joined, we do have another brief presentation about the annual ride. I see Jill, you're here. If you may remember, the annual ride for the Carbo Cancer Center, Jill is here to brief us on the route. So if there's no objection, we can move that up on the agenda?
Yep.
All right, great. The floor is yours, Jill.
Great, thank you. So I don't know if you guys are able to see the route from any of the presentations, or if you want me to pull that up on the screen. Is the preference to pull that up on the screen? Do I have that capability?
Sure, I believe we can grant that to you. Okay, yep, you should be able to.
Okay.
We like a visual. It's helpful.
It's the same route as last year, but it's also been, you guys have possibly had a lot going on since last year's. Hopefully, can you see that in one second here?
Yep.
Can you see that screen then, with the route?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So I'm hoping to use the same route again this year, so actually should kind of go back. So for anyone not familiar with the Ride, we are a 5K run-walk and cycling event. The run-walk takes place closer to our start-finish and happens all in Sun Prairie, so that's why I'm not coming to you about the run-walk. But the biking portion does hit Cottage Grove because of our routes. We send our hundred-mile, hundred-k, fifty-k, and twenty-five-k routes out to the east. We start at the American Family Insurance Headquarters at six thousand American Parkway, kind of right on that border of Madison and Sun Prairie, and so we send them out to the east. So as they're all coming back to essentially finish their day, they hit in, they head into Cottage Grove, basically the same. We're trying to make them come in the same way so that we can use the same roads, not have to clog up different roads with different riders. So how they enter is through Ridge Road. I do know that all the routes are, all the routes except, I think, one are actually using also up-hop road, which I know the bridge might be under construction this year. It will be under construction. So I'm aware of that, and if we need to make any changes to the route, if any of the construction gets delayed. But right now, the route is actually coming from Ridge Road into Taylor Street across Main Street. So they do have to stop at the stop sign at Main Street and go, when there are no cars coming. All of our riders are instructed to follow all rules of the road. We do not close down any roads except the one when they first start, but that's City of Madison's lease, and again, that's at the start for them. So they are to use all stop signs, all stoplights, so that they stop while they cross over North Main Street, and then head into their first rest stop, which is at Community Park. So just like last year, we would have our rest stop, which, three tents, a volunteer group to serve prepackaged food, Gatorade, water, also have a bike mechanic there, and a medical staff member there as well, usually from UW Health. And they would be at Community Park in kind of like the outfield where it faces Wheel Bridge, outside of the fence sign, right next to kind of houses right there. And then head up into, I believe that is Southern Grange, and then up through the town and the city, and then head out, and they eventually hit Gaston Road. So this is the part I think you all care about the most, and again, when they cross West Cottage Grove Road, they are also supposed to stop there and then continue on. So last year, we had about, in total, about fifteen hundred ride riders. We suspect we probably will have about seventeen, eighteen hundred this year, but they all come at different times throughout the day. So this rest stop in this kind of area of the course is utilized about ten to ten-thirty to six PM. That's because they're all finishing at this time. Some of them have had a hundred miles to kind of spread out. So we do see that most of the congestion is around that twelve to noon, sorry, twelve to two PM part. But that's, again, they're still coming in. There are no, you know, mass starts anywhere near that. So they stop at the rest stop and they go on, and again, use all stop signs and stoplights. And we send letters out to the residents on this road so that they're aware of this coming on, too. And I know also, the town and the village are also always great about putting out, you know, any social media posts or anything else that we can get out ahead of time so that people know that seventeen hundred bikers are potentially coming through this area. I think that is kind of the general idea of the event. Opening up to any questions you have, any issues you see with the route, anything that we can do to pretty much make sure that we get in and out, it seemed like we were never there.
Thanks, Jill. And remind me, once again, I know I asked this at Parks Committee, it's September?
Oh, yep, that would be very helpful. It's Sunday, September twenty-fifth.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from JoJo? Looks like you have one ready.
Well, just, there's a chance there may not be a road there. We're going to have Ridge and East Taylor under construction, but given the timing there, I think once the project is bid, we'll get a better idea of if there will be asphalt there. So Jill, I might shoot you an email here just to open up a line of communication on that, once we've got some more info.
Great, yeah, and anything that you see to, like, that with construction? Because we did change to this route a few years ago. We used to actually go on Biolis and up and use Baccan Park. And we changed that because literally the weekend before the ride. And we changed that because literally the weekend before the Ride, Bielis got torn up. So we actually then changed to this route. And we did find that people liked this route a little bit more because the streets were a little quieter. But that being said, we do have an alternative route that would avoid those roads if you're thinking that we may not have a road at that point. So just let me know about that and keep me posted. And yeah, we can definitely talk via email.
Thank you.
Just an incentive to get it done faster.
Exactly. Just tell them that eighteen hundred people are going to be riding their bikes no matter what. They really won't be, but...
Any other questions about the event, the route? Or, well, it's an event that benefits Carbone Cancer, so it's a great cause. Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve. It sounds like with staff conditions to keep open alternative route. Any other questions or consideration for motion?
I'll move to approve.
Just curious, will it be any construction at the Community Park at that time? Because they're starting a bike path this summer and basketball courts, is that correct, JJ?
Good catch, yep. So Sean and I will both open up a line of communication with Jill. Make sure we coordinate and change if we have to.
If I can just briefly, Troy, the basketball court is not scheduled for this year, so there won't be any construction on the south end of the park at all. It'll all be up by the parking lot in the playground area.
All right, well, it's off light now, I see, by the utilities, that's what made me think of it.
We have a lot of construction going on this year, which is good and a challenge.
I will move to approve allowing the Ride to use Community Park as a rest stop on Sunday, September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, with discussion with staff on the route.
I'll second.
Thank you, Melissa, thank you. I think in person, Paul beat out Troy's slight delay. But we have a third. Any other discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstained, motion carries? Thanks, Jill, and JJ and Sean for coordinating any updates on that.
Thank you all. And just so you all know too, we did just officially rebrand last week to the Badger Challenge. So I submitted everything as the Ride. We are still the same event, everything like that. But if you see anything else come across or signs that weekend, we are officially the Badger Challenge now, so.
All right, well, thank you. And we'll look for things we can share on our social media as the event gets closer too.
Great, thank you all.
Thanks, Jill.
Bye.
All right, so with that out of the way, we can move back to unfinished business for an update on the Stormwater Pond Projects, which we discussed last meeting. So I believe we have JJ or Josh to talk about those.
I'll just start off with, you may recall, you could have been expecting a resolution to go for urban non-point source grant. But there is no resolution, so I can let Josh speak to exactly why that is and what our plan is here moving forward, if you're available, Josh.
Yeah, I am, can you hear me, JJ?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so we looked into that pond some more. And as far as the urban non-point source grant, we called the DNR, talked to them a little bit about it. The only way you can get that grant is, you know, utilizing funds for, you know, taking out phosphorus and TSS control for development. It only qualifies for development that was prior to two thousand and four. So when we start looking at everything that drained to that pond, like a majority of it, ninety percent or more, is past the two thousand and four mark. So, I mean, what that means is you really don't have a good case or qualification for it. You could still go for the Dane County, the Dane County grant, which is five hundred thousand matching, fifty-fifty match. So that's still a really, really good grant opportunity. The non-urban point source through the DNR is only hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-fifty match. So we talked to him about the Dane County one. He still thought that that applied very well because you're still getting additional TSS removal and total phosphorus removal. But it doesn't require a resolution, was what is what JJ wanted to put into the meeting tonight. So he doesn't need to do that at this point.
So the Dane County, if we, am I catching that right? That it would, it's a rolling grant that...
Yep, yep, it's just not...
Yeah.
The pressure on us time-wise there. So Josh and his team will keep working towards it, we'll keep you updated. But just wanted to hit this one right away.
I still think we do that right away. We were kind of positioning to do this urban non-point source and then follow up with the Dane County one. But it's similar information, so I think we just push through with the Dane County one, get that application in. It is a rolling grant, but, you know, we just don't know how much money's in that pot. So we'd rather get our application in and get funding if possible now.
Any questions from board members for Josh and JJ?
How much do we expect this project to cost?
That is a good question. And I don't have those numbers in front of me now, but I do envision it costing roughly, let's say, over five hundred thousand but under a million. So I think it's somewhere in that, like three-quarters of a million range. So if the Dane County's a fifty-fifty match, you probably won't need all five hundred, unless it's more complicated than I'm thinking at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Right for the large range.
Any other questions on that? Do we expect to have this on an agenda soon, or will it go through another committee first?
We'll probably bring it to Public Works. And timing on that's not certain. Josh's team's got a lot going on right now. But as they dig into this, as soon as we've got a cost estimate and grant application materials and stuff, we'll bring it back.
All right.
Yeah, I would think, I would think we could push forward with that, JJ, over the next month or so, and then give an update to Public Works. And then if you find out you're getting funding, then move forward with kind of the design and everything else. You bet after that.
Okay, aren't any other questions? All right, then we can move on to new business. Discuss and consider Arbor Day proclamations. So we have our annual proclamation recognizing Arbor Day. I believe Sean added that to our packet. Do you have anything to add about the proclamation, Sean? You might be on mute if you're adding anything. Otherwise, are there any questions about the Arbor Day proclamation or a motion to consider?
A motion to approve the Arbor Day proclamation.
Second.
Thank you, Paul, thank you, Melissa. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstained, motion carries? All right, we'll move on to reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with the Law Enforcement Committee. I believe that is Troy or Sarah?
Troy, can you give the updates since I was in transit?
Sure. We met on March twenty-second. We did go review the goals and objectives for the Cottage Grove Police Department for two thousand and twenty-two, and it approved those. There's nothing disturbing going on with the activity report or anything like that. And I guess I'd refer to Chief as our more details on those goals and activities, or objectives, I should say.
Sure, thanks, Troy. So the number one goal is maintain accreditation. That's the most labor-intensive for us. It's a continual project for us, so that takes up the most time for us. Another goal was to keep up with technology and equipment and facility needs. So two of our biggest equipment needs for the future are license plate readers in fixed locations in the village, and then dash cameras in our squad cars. Not only do we have, you know, the officer wearing cameras, but we also have cameras in the car that are dash-mounted, which gives us a good overall view and recordings of activities. Those are pretty old Panasonic, so we may need to upgrade those. Another goal and objective was getting a peer support program going in the department. And that's part of the wellness component of what we've developed in the past. So we're going to send officers to peer support program training and officer intervention training. Obviously, we always had a policy that you had to report any improper, illegal use of force. We now have, that you have the duty to intervene. And there is actual training on how to do that and do it properly and do it effectively. And so we will be getting that done in two thousand and twenty-two. And then our chaplain program to get that off the ground. We have a chaplain who lives in the village, and he has done a background on him, he's now working with us. It's a voluntary position, not paid. And it's a really good position. I think it'll help the officers and staff. And it'll also be a help when we have critical incidents in the village, you know, like a suicide or a traffic accident. He can go with us if we have to notify people of something like that or be on scene. Just a real big help. And most police departments have chaplain program. So pretty happy to get ours off the ground and running now, so. Any questions on those?
Thank you, Chief. And we appreciate the in-depth presentation from last meeting and to build on that, all the great things you're doing in the department.
Thank you.
Did I mention anything, Chief?
No, I think that does it. We've got the people, two officers in field training. They come off of field training pretty soon, so they'll be out on the street and on the schedule. So we'll have a lot more coverage with, instead of having one officer on, we'll have two officers on at most times. That'll help, that'll help the community, help us. I hate having just one out there at a time, but that's pretty much going to be eliminated once we get the other officer out of the academy and through field training. And we'll be up to full strength. And the officer in the academy is doing well, so we have all the confidence in the world. He'll finish the academy and come out of there and join us and get on the street also like the other two.
Thank you, Chief, labor.
All right, any other questions for our Law Enforcement Committee? All right, thank you. Then we can move on to Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Committee. We met on March twenty-fourth. We heard from the Ride and the use at Community Park, as discussed earlier. We also had a brief update on the skate park and pump track, which is still on track in design. We talked about a couple of different options for the new playground options at Community Park. We also discussed Red Hawk Park Phase Two, which was originally planned for an inline skate rink in Phase Two. And working with our park developers, park designers through Strand, decided that wasn't the right park for that. So we're looking at putting in additional equipment instead. So we talked about those options. We talked about goals in the Five Year Parks and Open Space Plan as we work to update that. Aaron has us on track with looking at a different section at each meeting, so we update that plan. The goals are going to also incorporate multi-use paths in them, so that's kind of a new addition in that plan. Our new program coordinator started, so welcome him to the department and the village. I think that was most of what we covered, unless Sean, you have something to add?
Nope, you got it, thank you.
Great. All right, then we can move on to Joint Fire Department Committee.
I guess I will, since David's not here tonight. Let's see, we, the chief's report, we're at thirty-five members. We've had fifty-two calls this year so far, five in the Town of Pleasant Springs, fifteen in the Town of Cottage Grove, twenty-one in the Village of Cottage Grove, and eleven mutual aid. Tender Two and Engine Four got new tires, and it looks like we'll be getting a credit for those because they were still in fairly good condition, but they were older than seven years, which is why we needed to replace them. We discussed a little bit about the mission, vision, and value statement. And so we're going to be kind of taking the PAA report recommendations in order in a little bit at a time. So next meeting, we'll be going over items one A to C and two A to M, which are the strategic goals, I think, as well as the mission, vision, and values. The Town and Village Boards both approved the purchase of Squad One replacement as cash-on-delivery option. So no action taken on Squad One replacement. There was a, we had two quotes to remove the East Island and the Emergency Services Building parking lot. And we moved to accept the estimate from Snyder for fifteen thousand out of the Emergency Services Building Fund to remove the East Island. But that estimate might not have included everything, so it might come back to us. And our next meeting is April twenty-fifth. Is that everything?
Okay, any questions on joint fire? Thank you, Melissa. And we can move on to Net Big Landfill Monitoring Review Committee.
Everything was the same as every landfill, basically.
Net thing readings are...
Yeah, so everything's going fine, nothing of concern, so.
All right, no news is...
Always good when there's no bad news or anything, so.
No news is good news from the landfill. All right, thank you for that update. Then we can move on to item ten, reports from village officers. Start with Stafford Rosebaum. Larry, do you have any updates for us today? All right. And then we'll move on to communications and miscellaneous business. Consider the approval of vouchers. Any questions on vouchers?
I'll move to approve the vouchers.
Thank you, Melissa, thank you, Sarah. Any further discussion on vouchers? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstained, motion carries? Correspondence, do we have any correspondence to mention? All right, upcoming community events. Tomorrow is Spring Election Day, so we'll start with that. We are open at eight?
Seven AM.
Seven AM tomorrow.
Till eight PM.
Till eight PM. You could also bring your absentee ballot with you if you have it.
Yes.
Or vote in person.
Correct.
Great. Anyone else have any community events coming up?
I'll just note that April sixth is Bookmobile Day. So our library board person was hoping that we could post something on our village Facebook page, which she will send to you if you would like. Okay.
That'd be great.
So, yeah, since the Bookmobile services our community, it's nice to be able to recognize our Bookmobile Day. And then April ninth is the Optimist Club Easter Egg Hunt. But actually, pick up all the, all the adults spread all the Easter eggs, and all the kids come and pick them all up in like two minutes, so. But it's a lot of fun, so.
Still crossing your fingers for good weather, it looks like it's going to be okay.
Yeah.
Looks like it's going to be okay.
Hopefully, yeah. So April ninth, this Saturday.
Great. Any other upcoming community event? All right, a couple of things starting to gear up. Then we have future agenda items. Do you have any items for our next agenda? Do you have any items for our next agenda? We'll have Plan Commission before then, other committees. All right, do we have an update for 12 or 13? Closed, making a motion to go into closed session?
So I don't, I don't know that we need to go into closed session today, these are on the agenda, in, you know, depending on what comes up during the week, unless somebody has something they want to talk about with respect to the first item on the agenda, but I can tell you on the second, purpose of that was in case we needed to talk about the ongoing development agreement drafting for the Amazon project, and I'll just give you a quick update in open session. We have delivered the first draft earlier this week, or last week, was it? Last week, today's only Monday. It all blends together. But we delivered a preliminary developer agreement, there's still a lot of blanks that we have to fill in. You know, our original goal was to get this in front of you two weeks from today, and the idea was, we discussed in our last closed session, was to try to post that as early as possible next week, so that people who are interested in this obviously very interesting project could have a chance to read and review that before that meeting. So we're on kind of a tight timeline, but we'll see if we get there, it all depends on how fast they come back to us, and how many changes they have that require us to dig or debate or negotiate, so, but it's moving along, and I don't know that there's anything really else to discuss in closed session at this point, other than, we'll see if we can get it done in a week, week and a couple days maybe. We talked about maybe next Wednesday, a week from Wednesday being about the outer edge of where we'd like to have it available for you and for other members of the public to review for the following Mondays. We've got about nine days.
No, it's counting.
If they, I mean, if they, if they like what we drafted, we'll be done tomorrow, but we'll see. There's always a lot of detail, and then, you know, with a lot of organizations, there's often a lot of cooks in the kitchen, and a lot of preferences about how things work, and so, you know, if not, you'll just not have to vote. Do we keep them out? My last, that's what I say. My last hurrah. But that's all I've got, and if there isn't anything anybody else has to add for the other closed session item, we can all go watch basketball.
All right, then I'd be off the hook for reading all that, like John usually does, so unless anyone objects. All right, then, yeah.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion by Melissa, second by Paul, non-debatable, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, thanks, everyone.
Take care.
Have a great night.